Okay. Meeting is called to order at 7:03. Members present, we are all present. And hear from public. Do we have anybody who wants to speak from the public?
Hey Catherine, it's Paul Varga.
Hi Paul.
How are you?
Well, how are you?
Hope everybody's enjoying the sunshine for a change.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Um, I, I was gonna try to send an email, but I've been busy trying to catch up on hay when the sun is actually shining.
Yeah.
Just to say, I know you sent a thing out in the citizen about what people would like to see done with the American Relief Fund or Recovery Fund or, and something I, I haven't heard talked about was looking at some type of direct payment or compensation to the first responders and possibly other departments in town who work through the pandemic.
Yes.
The one, the one that comes to mind right off the top of my head is Public Works because you know, they had to go, they plowed snow and they cut trees and everything. And I know that because as a first responder, I worked with them obviously.
Right, it would, it would need to be something COVID related.
Right, and I know that several places have said that they've done some type of, of payment. I haven't read all the rules. Could have done that when I was at work, but. Yes, it's just something I thought I would mention that I would like to see something done in that, in that respect.
Okay, um, we did put out an email, uh, address to send things to so we can make sure we get down, everything downright, but I'm, I'm gonna mark this down.
Okay.
Emergency, excuse me, emergency first responders, yeah. And I, I wanna talk with the fire chief on this anyway.
Okay.
So, thank you. Anything else? Anybody else? Okay, shuffling merrily along. Selectmen's update is, yeah, the briefing. Couple of things, road repairs are still underway. Work is slowed due to COVID cases in Public Works. I, I've seen a number of the areas where they've made improvements or actually tried to recoup what we used to have. And it's coming along, just a little slower than we'd like. Safety improvements are underway at Pompe Hollow Park right now, including replacement of the sidewalks, replacement of the lighting, and paving will start once the sidewalks are completed. A very lofty goal is to complete everything by the end of the month, so don't hold us to it. Okay, but that is good news for that area. We, I'm sorry, any questions on that? We have not received the formal OSHA report from the August inspection. As soon as we have that, I'll be forwarding out to the selectmen and we'll talk about it, that whatever meeting is the next meeting. Consulting Engineering Services affectionately called CES, they were working on their reports for their assessments of the Town Office Building, Knowlton, Memorial Hall, Senior Center, Senior Housing and Fire Station 20. They have been asking for some additional information about the buildings themselves from our building department and also they are asking for information about electric and fuel costs for the various buildings as of year end, I guess. So they'll need that to be able to complete their assessments. The Town Office Building roof apparently has been leaking for some time. July and August storms exacerbated the issue. We certainly had some trickling water coming down in the town clerk's office to the point where it splashed on the chair and then splashed upon papers that were on our first, our town clerk's desk. So we're having that inspected on Wednesday, the town roof is being inspected on Wednesday, September 22nd. Another thing that we have in the packet, selectmen, is the a write-up that Chris Abikoff provided to us, and that is about the DECD Brownfield funding, annual funding, not annual, but their funding for Brownfield remediation projects. And you'll have, you've got a full write-up there, provides a lot of detail. The bottom line is that we could not apply for remediation funding for this fall round because but we won't own the property until December 3rd, provided there are no issues to come up before that. So, and the actual round of funding to apply for ends, I think it's, it ends before that, it ends in October. So the spring funding, the spring round is for assessments. We've already done our assessment. The summer round next year is going to be for, for actual improvements. And what we should have in place, if we can, is what the plan is for the property at that point. So that's just an update, you have the write-up. Okay, and I don't have anything else unless, Chris, I somehow forgot something we don't have on here. Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on to hear from boards, commissions, committees, do we have anything from anyone? Hearing none. We'll move on to acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 7th, 2021.
I move to accept.
Thank you Roger.
Second.
Thank you, and I, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. All right, old business, discuss reopening strategies, town facilities, update regarding to holding a board and commissions meetings, a commission meetings, still working on the hybrid meetings. I'm, I'm actually talking to another company to make sure that we've got a, a good plan. The update on access to closed captioning feature for Zoom meetings, I don't think we've heard anything on that. Chris, did you hear anything?
Yeah, I sent a memo with the packet last time. Mike D'Amato checked the Zoom meetings don't close caption. He said Teams does, but it's not accurate. As the translator in Teams picks up all the sound and makes it difficult for the application to accurately differentiate spoken words. He gave me a suggestion for what he puts on his agendas. That is, if you have concerns related to your ability to attend this meeting, please contact the selectmen's office with the phone number. So if we need to make special arrangements for every, anybody like for signing, we can see if we can find a translator.
Very good, and so I think we'll be sending, I'd like to send out an email to all of the board chairs to have them put that on their agendas. That sound right?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, discuss need for additional help in the finance office. Cheryl, you wanna take us through that? You provided us with information for our last meeting, which everybody should have had the opportunity to look at. And talk about the need and what that, you know, specifics about.
So, um, the duties in the office have grown tremendously over the years. It started out just bookkeeping, but then as the town grew, we added a server and we added email and we added a phone system and it just, it keeps growing. And I've found that a lot of my position now is administrative, I do, I, I, you know, there's a lot of reporting and other things to do besides the actual working with the finance system, so what, what I'm proposing is that we hire a 25-hour-a-week person. And I'm not married to that figure, you know, that number of hours. If somebody, if the selectmen's office wanted to, to take some hours also, I'd be absolutely open to that. But this person would learn the, the finance system to be a backup for Laura and myself because we can, we need the additional person, especially when one of us is out. Because it's hard to do both things. We have no separation of duty when there's only one of us there. So that would be a, a large part of the position and also to learn the website and the Facebook page to assist with that, especially meetings and agendas. Right now, when I'm on vacation, Karen in the town clerk's office, the assistant town clerk has been covering as much as she can. And that, that's, you know, a separate, that's a union position. Whereas the IT department is not a union position, the finance is not a union position. So I'd like to bring even the backup for myself in IT into the, into that office. We'd also need assistance with setting up some things in the new finance system. I wasn't able to get the fixed assets in yet, so they could assist with that. It would be a lengthy spreadsheet with all of the data for all of our fixed assets. It doesn't just merge from one system into the new system. And assisting with the reporting, for instance, budget time when all of the books need to be made for the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen and keeping up with what's in them and, and making sure they're up to date. So I think we have plenty for another person to do and it would take some of the pressure off so Laura and I could feel we could leave, you know, for a week at a time and not have anything dropping. Any questions? I thought you were gonna tell me I was on mute the whole time.
Catherine, I, I've got a couple of questions. Cheryl, do you find that the new system that we invested in is actually costing you more time than the old system?
It absolutely is taking more time, yes.
I, I, you don't have to elaborate too much, but can you give us an overview of why? I mean, I would assume with the major investment the town made in that system, we were all assuming that would be more functional and easier to use. Is that not the case?
It is not the case. For the record, it was not the system that I, that I had chosen myself. A couple of examples would be payroll. In our old system, it was in one screen you could do everything you needed to do with, with the employee, the taxes, the benefits, enter in the hours for, you know, regular time, holiday, vacation, pay overtime. All in one screen with the new system, it's much different. It's more like a spreadsheet on a database, it looks more like a database and you go to different places to enter different items. So it's, it's far more complicated to use, it's far more complicated to maintain. It makes errors. We had one instance where it did not correctly pick up an overtime figure. It used the prior year, even though when you looked at the screen, you saw the correct overtime rate. When the check printed, it was the wrong overtime rate. So there, there are errors that pop in and you don't know it until, you know, after someone gets their check and says, well, this isn't right. And we don't like to, we don't like to have that, especially with payroll. It's also more difficult to enter in the Board of Ed payroll because with our old system, we could and use a journal entry to affect the cash. And the Board of Ed payroll is for hits to cash each time they do a payroll. So in July and August, when they're doing two payrolls a week with the accrued payroll, that's eight times it goes to cash. And then multiple, multiple entries for grants, the different grants are entered separately and then the general fund, Board of a General Fund expenditures entered separately. With the new system, we have to do, we have to create an invoice and then process that invoice and then create, you know, it's, it's complicated, then create a, a non-check voucher and then pay that voucher. So there are all those steps for each cash transaction. So we have to do a cash transaction and take part of the, the Board of Ed's payroll and minus it off each time to come up with those four transactions for each payroll that's done. It's, it's much more complicated and yeah, so those are two examples or three examples.
On, on the payroll, Cheryl, now does, does school do their staff and then what do they do, send you a summary or how does that work?
Well, they're supposed to have started their payroll on the system, but they haven't yet. Now they're saying January 1st, so I'm not sure what will happen then, but right now they have a payroll company. So they, they send their information to the payroll company and then the payroll company sends a report that lets me know what those, what the amounts are that will come out. And I know which ones combine and which ones come out separate, so that's how we know what to, what to look for when the payroll hits the account.
So are, are the checks for their staff actually generated by your office or by the school?
By the payroll company.
Just for theirs, but not for ours?
Correct, we do ours in-house.
And what's the number of staff that we're, we issue payroll on?
We have probably 25 people regularly. We can have up, up to 50 with registrars and poll workers and, you know.
I'm sorry, with what?
With, when there's an election, so registrars and the poll workers add, add to it, you know, when they have their.
Now, when, when the school, they, they told you they're gonna take it over on their, their portion on January 1st from this payroll company? Do you know, are they bringing on extra staff to handle that or?
They already have a full-time payroll person and a full-time accounts payable person and a business manager.
And is, is, are any of those positions new?
Um, well, relatively speaking, I would say not new. I think Lynn.
I'm saying new is comparison, is the new system came on board.
Lynn was already there, so the accounts payable person was already there. The payroll person started at about the same time the training began. And the business manager is new this July. And the, the previous person who was acting as the, the business manager was on, was already working for them when the system, when we started the training. So she stayed on until just the last week, I think it was.
Bill, I, Bill, I can tell you that it was a, a kind of a critical factor when they were interviewing for a business manager or choosing a business manager for the school, that the business manager know the system. That was one of the pluses for the one that they got.
That the business manager knows the system?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And it is a pretty cumbersome system and it's pretty cumbersome, if I understand correctly, getting the kind of support that you need for it as well.
Yeah, the support is, support is terrible. You can wait, you know, the minimum I've waited is, is an, is an hour and the maximum is three days to get someone to call you back when you're doing payroll. So I've, I've found people who, when I'm really up against it, I can, you know, call in a favor, if you will.
Didn't we, didn't we have a sales rep or come in or do a Zoom meeting with us about this system before we actually committed to it?
The, the Chairman of Board of Finance saw a demonstration. And, and I saw the demonstration Laura did and the business manager they had at the time, who knew the system, she was at the demonstration as well.
If I understanding, if I understand correctly, when it came to deciding what system it was, it was really the Board of Ed that led the charge. Because they were looking to make sure that they got a new system in place and putting
She already knew.
the town on the same thing, made it so that we could at least get into the same technical arena. So, and I know that Cheryl and that this department has struggled with the system mightily. I still am aghast as an ex-IT person that it would take a year, a year of training to even be able to use the system, which is what exactly did it cost. So, and the other thing too is the school was supposed to start doing, excuse me, certain aspects of, use certain aspects of the system in January, starting in January, the way we did, and they did not. They chose to put off the payroll till, excuse me, July. Excuse me, and now they're putting it off until next year, until January, because it's that complex. I tried to stick my nose into it and the reality is that even I can't have a conversation with the vendor because of the way the contract is written.
Well, personally, I, I'd suggest that the Board of Selectmen recommend a meeting with who's ever in charge of that from the school and address these issues and if possible, ask that a representative from this company, I, I remember there being some controversy because we wanted a, a body to come down so we could sit down and, and have a roundabout answer and a question and answer session and we couldn't get anybody, we had to do video at the time.
Oh, really? Okay.
But I'm, I'm getting the impression that some of the current concerns, I know that Cheryl had expressed when we were considering this new system, seemed to have come to fruition. And I'm not happy about it.
Well, I think that how the data got set up, you know, actually getting the data in, a lot of that was put on to our employees and also making sure that the system was working properly. I, I don't think the IT people, the, the company did a very good job of that. And certainly the training should never have taken as long as it did.
No.
No, they really, they, in a sense, they used our people to get it set up when they should have been able to migrate some of the data that we had in the, in our older system into.
Right when this happened, wasn't it going through quite a transition there in their own business office?
Oh, yes, they were a mess.
So maybe we've fallen victim to that, that problem, but I, I would really suggest, and I'd be happy if you wanted to do it as, as a board, that you ask for some sort of a meeting with, I know it's a new superintendent up there, but I think we had to address these issues that we're experiencing right now because to me, they're just unacceptable.
Um, yes, I can go and get that set up. The other thing that Cheryl mentioned is about some of the, the work that we never did before or was, never had to do before. You know, things with the meeting notices and just the volume of things that have to be posted out onto our website, et cetera. That's, that's a lot of work and it's work that interrupts you. So if you're in the middle of something and someone needs something put out there, there's a time factor to it. So, you know, and we encounter that, I know we encounter. And when we talk about Karen supporting this, you know, putting those things out there, there are certain things she can do and there's certain things she doesn't know how to do. So, and it's not really part of her job description to do it, again with.
How would we go about dealing with this? I mean, is this something we have to propose to the Board of Finance for the position or what, how would we go about?
I would, I would say yes. I, I don't know about the rest of you, but whenever we talk about using money.
Yep.
You know, money that we hadn't planned on, then yeah, in my opinion, we would talk to the Board of Finance.
Typically, the Board of Finance, and historically it's been, they will move on something that is recommended by the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
I, I, I happen to have an issue with hiring a new position and, and was this brought up during the last budget cycle?
It was not. We were, we were just starting with the new system. We had no idea, no idea, but what we were in for really. It's, we knew it was going, going to be difficult, but it's far more difficult than, than we imagined. And we have a lot of experience with a lot of different software systems between the two of us and it's just a lot of what, what, what goes on with the system just doesn't make sense.
I'd like to add something as well. When we were going through the budget cycle, I hadn't thought about this before, we were going through the budget cycle, Cheryl and Laura and the school were going through how to try to even use the system. You know, we, we put, we put our stuff in there first. I mean, when all is said and done, we started actively using its capabilities first. And the months of January, February, March were, I'm sure, a blur. We didn't know how to do quarterly reporting, we didn't, we, in fact, we had to come back and get additional support for year-end reporting, which is your fiscal year-end. And I remember that Cheryl, we had to, she had to do double entry in order to produce our budget information. She put it into the old system and was paralleling with the new system. And when all was said and done, had to get reports out of the old system because we couldn't get them out of the new system. So there was so much going on at the time, I, I don't wanna be, you know, I don't wanna, I don't want you to not understand that that's what was going on at the time when we were trying to do the budget process.
I, I was hearing about some of the difficulties and like I said, I, I specifically at several Board of Finance meetings, remember Cheryl expressing some concerns about the system. Have, have we fully paid for this system?
Yes.
We have?
We own it.
I mean, I, I'd like to write, have, have the board write a stern letter to the proponents and, and the company that supplies to us and take a clear look and see if there were any misrepresentations. Because I certainly wouldn't have supported buying into a new system that was going to be as, as harsh on our existing staff as apparently it is. My, my problem again with, with supporting, hiring a new position in almost mid-year is that we're coming up on a very austere year next year. We're all looking, I mean, from hearing what the Board of Finance has projected, potential of a 2 mil increase or more. I have a problem bringing out a new position at the time. Not saying that my mind is totally solved, but at this sitting right now, I'm not, I'm not in a position where I'm going to support hiring a new position. My suggestion would be that we try to get together with this company, see if they can do anything and make any recommendations and the Board of Ed and put our forces together to try to get something done to give Cheryl and, and her office some support from that end of it.
So not even a part-time position?
Correct. Now, I'm one, three here, so I mean, I, I'm, I'm just expressing my personal opinion to you guys.
I don't think we can count on any help from the Board of Ed staff. I am waiting for the, so I have to break down between general fund and all of the grants in the system. And I have two payrolls from the two past payrolls that they have not gotten those to me. I've asked repeatedly and it just is not forthcoming. They just, they can't get that done for whatever reason. I don't know what the payroll person is doing other than payroll that is keeping her from completing that. And.
And who, and who have you requested this from, their payroll person?
I requested from the payroll person and from the business manager.
You think it would be any help if we had our first selectman contact the superintendent and lay these concerns out?
It, it may, it may or may not, the business manager is on vacation this week and ultimately it would be her responsibility. And I don't want to burn any bridges.
Yeah, well, that's why I was thinking that, I mean, we can, we can speak on your behalf without you being, you'll probably end up in the middle of it anyway, but. I know there's a new superintendent up there, I've had a couple of brief discussions with him. And I know he's looking forward to doing the right thing and I think it's important. If there is some weaknesses within the system, that we bring it to his attention from our perspective.
And well, the other thing too is I would expect that that business manager, and I would like that person in the mix, is. That she has, she is familiar with the system. So I would be asking her about where she feels the gaps are. Now, the other part of this is, is they use the system differently than we do, we have different screens than they do. And, you know, I would have thought that there would be some commonality in a system that's being, is supposed to be essentially shared. And it appears that there's not very much. And if the tables underneath the system are not set up correctly, that's why you get problems like Cheryl had mentioned with the. Having the wrong rate, having the prior year's rate on something. So, you know, even in terms of being able to check out the system to make sure it's working right, I think. I, I mean, I would have loved to have gotten in the mix on this before, but it's the, our hands have been tied on this end. And the only.
I can remember sitting at Board of Finance meetings and the business manager from the school at at the time. Being a very strong proponent of this new system. And from her presentations, and I thought payroll was a big part of it. Was going to become much more simplified and 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 easier to handle. It sounds like they haven't even got into that system, they've got a private payroll company here. Doing them right now and and. My sitting there and the Board of Finance spend much more time than I did, but it's not living up. To the expectations that I was anticipating. And I'm talking about the new system.
So I can definitely have a converse, start with a conversation with the superintendent to say, you know, these issues have just. They're more than we can bear and we need to do something about it, we need to do it together. Because we can't do anything unilaterally, the Board of Selectmen can't with this one.
Correct.
Because we didn't sign the contract, if I understand correctly, the school did. Is that correct, everybody that knows? I don't know, because I never saw a demo of the system or anything, so.
I think Michael signed it, Michael and Jim.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, I didn't see anything about it, so. Anyway, I'll be glad to reach out to the superintendent and then talk to him about how we can get together. To go over what the issues are and see what can be taken back to the company to.
You know, if possible, Catherine, I would suggest including Chuck Funk on it because I know he had a lot of direct contact. From my perspective of what I was hearing with this company and trying to coordinate with the school.
Okay, that sounds good. So, so that's looking at one of the problems we have, but we still have the problem with simply not enough hours. In in the day, if you will, to take care of all the things that they're trying to take care of in the finance department. Because we do have these other things that they're having to do.
Yeah, I mean, stop me if I'm wrong, didn't we have the same conversation last spring about getting somebody in there and 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 getting some help in there? We did.
I think so, I think it's been pushed back on for years. And and I think that's kind of created kind of a healthlessness. On the part of the finance department to get anything to truly happen, in fact, I think that's part of the reason that it wasn't pursued during the budget process. Is they've been told no a number of times, so.
But I think we'd all agree that that. I I know we don't live in a perfect world, but that's where that really should have been addressed.
Yes, it is. Yep. All right, so next steps here. Next steps is I reach out to the superintendent. And then see where that goes and then it may be a strong, a joint strong letter to the. Company about the issues that we have with the system and we should be specific about some of those issues. And express our concern about certain possible misrepresentations, is that correct?
Well, I think that and also I I think what Cheryl mentioned about people not getting back to her. Sometimes in a week is totally unacceptable.
Yeah, do you know what our, now, I'm forgetting what the term is for, oh my God. What the expected turnaround is when we make a request, Cheryl?
What what they say, I do not, but.
This should be in the contract.
Yeah, I I'm not sure. I I was used to making a phone call and speaking to a person, not making a phone call, leaving my number and a message and waiting for somebody to call back, so.
Cheryl, do you recall what we what we paid for the new system?
We paid almost a hundred thousand dollars.
A hundred?
The system and the initial training.
Oh, that was the software alone?
And it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for any outside training we get, we request. Which I have requested some because I don't know how to do. W twos or ten ninety-nines in this system, I don't know how to do the ten ninety-four, the ten ninety-five. It's just. A lot that is not. Just there and understandable, there are things you have to do. In in other parts of the program in order to have it move over to the part that you need. And every year is a separate database, so we can no longer run, like with the brownfield. That Chris just completed. We could run multiple years at one time into one report and see how much we spent. With this system, we have to go to, well, we've lost all of our. Prior year history now, but we would have to go to this year. And then switch databases and print one for the next year and then switch databases and. So, year end was very challenging, going back and forth and remembering which year you were in. To make sure you entered things in the correct year.
And and all of our previous data has been totally lost?
I paid for an extra year of the previous system so that I could hang on to it for now.
Yeah.
But it it will, it will be available in. PDFs because I've been. Doing PDFs of of years of information, but it won't be, you know, I won't be able to go into the system and just. Get a couple keystrokes and get the information anymore.
PDFs are pretty much nothing more than a report.
Yeah, well, it will be PDFs of the reports, right?
Was there a project manager for the implementation of the system, just out of curiosity?
There was. There was more than one.
How about from our end?
Oh, no, I mean, with Tyler, there was a project manager. Probably I was considered the project manager for the town.
Or someone representing the town, and I would have thought it would have at least been at the school.
We had separate training.
I mean, one of the things for, again, looking at it from a bit of the, from the outside, one of the things I was always concerned with was. There was conversations going on with Tyler, there were conversations going on with the business office of the school. And Chuck was trying to do what he could, but and. Cheryl, from what I saw, I mean, our head of our finance department seemed the first person out of this.
Yes, which is a big mistake.
And, and well, it was a mistake then, but we're paying the consequences now for it.
As a, as an IT project, project manager, I can tell you that's just not the way to do it. So, and.
You'll know the right wordage to use in the letter.
She's a major stakeholder. And you have to have them in the mix before you even implement. So. You know, it's quite the situation. All right, so with this one, I have my marching orders, okay? On the getting somebody to assist. Take some of the the pressure and hours off of these people. If this, you're saying not to pursue it at this time, when would we pursue it?
Well, first of all, I mean. You and Roger can certainly pursue it if you want, there's three of us here. What what I'd like to do is 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 just. We, I know we, Cheryl has been trying to be as patient as she can. But let let us do some fact finding, let us get the principal parties, the stakeholders, get some of their feedback. And then decide how we want to tackle that. That's only my opinion.
Roger, how about you?
Well, again, I'm only concerned is that this isn't just solely about, you know, the town payroll, it's about all the other duties and everything else that. Seem to kind of mount up and 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 we've got to admit that that kind of is the trend and the reality out there. I certainly saw it as a teacher. So, you know. I mean, I I, and we've had these conversations before about, you know, the number of things that need to get done around the. Can't due to the workload and so. You know, I'm not adverse to sitting there and and looking to get some help in there.
So, and neither am I. So. I like us all to be working together on everything. So with this, what else would we want to have? You know, I get, I get the fact finding, Bill, and the fact finding is really about what's wrong with the system. Right?
No, absolutely.
Okay, any other fact finding we need to do? Is there anything additional that Cheryl could provide in the write-ups that she's already provided that would give you more information about the other duties? That have grown over time or really manifested themselves over time just because of the technologies that we're working with? Trying to make sure we are putting the information out to the public. You know, we know we're going to have, you know, Text My Gov is going to be coming out. We just want to make sure that we're not putting people in their graves trying to get the information out to the public.
Cheryl, can I ask a candid question? I know when when it came up. When when you would come to us and and we decided to go with you having both positions that you have. Are are they? You being both the administrative assistant and the treasurer, is that causing any difficulties at all or or stressing your time more than perhaps it should?
I, again, that has also, the treasurer's piece has also increased, but by having. By having both positions, we have a full-time treasurer where in the past, we've had, you know, a treasurer only in the evening or a treasurer. For an hour or two a week when she came in. So. I think that that too has grown, yes, because we are taking a lot more online payments than we were. The tax collectors really pushed hard and done a great job to get people to pay online. The town clerk's office now takes e-file payments for electronic documents that they receive. We're working toward doing the same with the dog licensing. And the building department does online building permitting and zoning and wetlands are talking about perhaps doing the same, so. There is that added, you know. I I check the the bank account every day. And send out emails to whoever has received money, but we also have to check now because there's so much mysterious activity. With with bank accounts and charge cards and such. An individual, if somebody does something like scams a check in your account, if you're an individual. You have some time to to deal with that. If you're a business or municipality, you have twenty-four hours to discover it and report it, otherwise you may not. Be able to recoup those funds. So I do scan, you know, look at the account every day and and check, even on Thursday mornings, I'm checking the account to make sure. You know, payroll has hit correctly on those weeks and that there's nothing unusual that I can I can figure out. So I don't know if that answered the question, it does, it has increased some, but. Not as much as the rest of of the job and again, I I think. Were I to not be the treasurer anymore, I would recommend a full-time treasurer position.
Right, because now the treasurer's, you say full-time, but that full-time is. Originally, I think, was intended to be something like eighteen hours a week, something like that.
No, it was, well, when Anne Sapino was the treasurer, she would come in, I think, once a week for a few hours on Wednesday.
Oh, I mean, I mean, in terms of you as treasurer. Okay, and then you have another role, which is a hourly role. Okay, so the full-time piece of the treasurer's full-time piece is not the vast majority of all the work you do, the other work is more of your time.
Absolutely, absolutely, so I would, you know, recommend getting it a combined position, however you do that.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is is due to all kinds of things, online payments. Et cetera, the types of work are increasing. I can, whoever is not on mute. We hear background noise. So if you could put yourself on mute, that would be great. Chris, are you on mute?
No.
Do you have a sound in the background, any chance?
I I hate to point fingers, but my my highlighted screen keeps going back to Roger, some noise coming out of Roger. Oh, no, well, now it's still feedback.
Okay, I don't know where it's coming from, I just.
Sorry to single you up.
Sounds odd. All right, so, you know, back to the discussion, the. There is more activity, so is there some way that we can truly quantify it beyond what Cheryl has already provided to us?
Off the top of my head, I think, you know, she supplied us with her proposal on a job description or whatever and and certainly gave us some information tonight, I'd like to. To think on it a little bit and perhaps my recommendation would be we put it on for our next meeting. And give you an opportunity to have some discussions with the school and perhaps with Chuck. And I'd be willing to look at it then.
How about you, Roger, same?
We lost Roger.
You're on mute, Roger. Or you're frozen. There you go. And your preference, Roger, same thing? I I agree, Bill, what we can do is do a little more homework on this, do the, the reach out to the superintendent and the business manager, I would like her to be back from vacation for that.
Yep.
And and Chuck as well.
Sounds like Roger's trying.
Yeah, I mean, you know. I I like to. Certainly the approach to subject with the finance or like. We're looking.
I couldn't understand that, but if somebody else did.
No, I was getting about every third or fourth word.
Yeah, it was a little challenge there, Roger, we failed. So. You want to repeat that, Roger?
I'm I'm going to disconnect the video and see if that.
Helps a bit.
I've disconnected the video and see if that helps with the bandwidth issue.
Yes, it does, yes.
Now.
Okay, so what's your pleasure, Roger?
Yeah, I mean, let's, let's. Progress on this, certainly, let's talk to Chuck. Or introduce to the Board of Finance our concerns. Certainly, I mean, I would assume that the Board of Finance would have some issues in terms of 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 fiscal oversight and what have you. So let's just test the water, certainly.
There's a Board of Finance meeting this Thursday, so I'll be attending that and in my briefing, I'll. I'll talk to them about this. Okay, and then we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Thank you, thanks for your patience going through this. Thank you. Thanks for your patience going through this. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Okay, moving on to consideration of resolution authorizing Mike Demato, zoning agent act as authorized representative of the town of Ashford to execute amendments and revisions, implement project activities if approved and execute any other agreements of contract relative to the notice of grant award for the Affordable Housing Plan Grant Technical Assistance Program. Our last meeting, I know I had issues with how the proposed resolution or motion, actually resolution was worded. I've since talked with Mike Demato. I also talked with the Chair of the Planning and Zoning, and this is not something that planning and zoning oversees, this is something the Board of Selectmen oversee. Okay, so, uh, I did come up with, oh, a different wording for it. And what I'm going to do, actually, I'm going to read it to you. And, um, I think that maybe it will help with this. So, it's resolved effective September 20th, 2020 to authorize Michael D. Demato, zoning agent, to execute the Notice of Grant Award for the Affordable Housing Plan Grant Technical Assistance Program dated July 1st, 2020, to execute amendments, revisions and revisions thereto, to implement project activities and to act as the authorized representative of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Ashford and to execute any other agreement or contract relative to said project. So that makes sure that it's under our auspices, auspices, and, uh, and doesn't, um, curtail his efforts in terms of getting things done in a quick manner.
Could, could you, could you briefly read that again?
No problem. Resolved effective September 20th, 2020 to authorize Michael Demato, zoning agent, to execute the Notice of Grant Award for the Affordable Housing Plan Grant Technical Assistance Program dated July 1st, 2020, to execute amendments, revisions and revisions thereto, to implement project activities and to act.
But can you stop there? Is Mike on?
No, he's not. John is.
What, what, how do we define implement proj- project?
This is to accept the award and then to, and we're saying how that person who's accepting, you know, that we're accepting it and how we're going to work with it. And did I get that right, John?
So I, I believe this first step is just to sign, sign the contract back to the state and you guys would be authorizing Mike to be that signatory. If you'd prefer, it could be Catherine, it could be someone else, but you're just assigning this to Mike.
I did toy with putting my name in there.
Yeah.
And I talked to Mike about it today. And, um, and then I thought better of it because I don't want to be in the middle of every single thing that he's doing.
Sure.
But I have no problem having my name in there instead of his. I just don't want to get in the way of him actually doing the activities he needs to do.
Oh, no, no, and that would, I think, but the, the other, the other key nuance to understand is that, um, this does not relieve the town. If, you know, if for instance, you would like Mike and I to do this as, you know, Taike Planning and Policy Group, um, as an extension of our existing contract or, or whatever, this does not necessarily relieve the town for going through whatever appropriate procurement process. Um, this is just to, just to get the process started between the town and the state. If that helps.
So implement project process?
Implement project activities.
Project activities just relates as to the mechanism of the grant application? What does project activities mean?
I take it as, I take it as whatever research needs to be done, whatever needs to be documented as part of the plan, you know, to create the plan. That's what those activities are. And John, would you agree?
I would, and it wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't necessarily be the, the actual production of the, the grant, but I think it would be sort of the town oversight, or I'm sorry, production of the plan, but it would be the town oversight of the process.
Right, but your company is doing the actual documentation of.
We certainly hope, we certainly hope to write the plan for you.
Yes, we want that.
And, and, and what is the P and Z's role?
Uh, is Jeff Silver Smith still on? Ah, there you are.
Hey, Jeff.
You want to clarify in terms of your role or non-role?
Well, P and Z has by de facto kind of taken on the reins on this. It is not required from the, uh, uh, plan of affordable housing that it is P and Z to do this. Many towns have a housing authority that might be dealing with it.
And sorry to interject, but we also pulled the statute on this. Christine pulled the statute on this one, which clarified it.
And again, everything really boils down to the town leaders, whether it's a, uh, town meeting type of situation or a, uh, Board of Selectmen or town manager or whatever is the actual lead in most cases on this. However, again, it kind of acquiesce to, uh, planning and zoning to try and move through it because it does have many areas of planning and zoning, including training of land use officials and things like that. So we're, we're happy to spearhead on this and work forward and work with the group that happens to also be the zoning enforcement officer consultant.
Is, is the housing authority given any input or are they being consulted with at all in this process?
My last discussion with Mike in at the planning and zoning meeting, uh, this past Monday, was that originally we were thinking about having a steering committee, but we started talking about the old adage, too many cooks in the kitchen. So what we want to do is a presentation to, um, board members such as that, including, um, Board of Selectmen, potentially Board of Finance, Housing Authority, and give a, uh, a skeleton, if you will, a, uh, outline of what we're looking to do and what we're looking for. And, and gain some input on that, obviously, you know, gain their input if they have any to, uh, what it is we're looking to do and what we're looking to put in place.
That would be done, of course, prior to any submission of any proposal.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's, that's at the very beginning of things. You know, even the last time I talked with Mike, we talked about if he had a presentation ready, but he has one that he has worked on and worked with in the past that he's ready to go with. So we're going to do this very early on in the process.
Thanks, Jeff.
Sure.
So let's go back to the resolution. So with this, uh, bottom line, are we going to authorize Mike Demato? Are you going to authorize me, uh, whatever, to act as the authorized representative of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Ashford in this? And this is to accept the grant and describing, you know, the, the, uh, how we're going to manage the grant.
My, my inclination is that I'd like to see the control in the Board of Selectmen.
And that's why I have to act as the authorized representative of the Board of Selectmen. So.
So would, would, would you or we be consulted before anything is finalized or signed?
Absolutely.
As, as long as you, you feel strong that that's the case, I'll support it.
Yeah, I would never not do that. So, uh, and John, that would work as well?
That would work. That would.
If we put, if we put my name in there?
Yeah, absolutely.
Bit of Michaels. And that's where we are, Bill, correct?
Yeah, I, I, I would put your name in there slash representing the Board of Selectmen.
And, yeah, and to act as the authorized representative of the Board of Selectmen. That's just part of the other part of this. Okay, we can do it that way. Can, um, that's a simple change to what I have here. And so would we have a motion? Yes, we'll have a motion on this.
I'll make the motion to, uh, for the proposal as amended.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, it was, uh, motion passes, thank you. Okay, so we'll get that to Michael right away.
Probably see you tomorrow.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, oh, target shooting on private property. I would like to give a, a brief update that I got from the lieutenant, which was very nice. I had called him to ask if he would, uh, have, um, bear with me. Trooper Davis, take a look at the backstop that I had seen on one of the properties that, uh, where there was a concern. And I'd taken a picture of it. It wasn't a very good backstop. I never would have cared. The, uh, and what I got back for an answer is he said, I'll do you one better than that. That's already been done. And what he relayed was that particular, uh, target shooter had actually already been working on his backstop. He put in eight-inch logs behind it, uh, at which it didn't have anything really before. And, uh, also that it was recommended that he make it a foot higher. In addition, that particular person apparently, uh, I told him or reached out or whatever to his neighbors through, uh, emails, if I understand correctly, uh, saying here are some times that he, on dates, that he wanted to do some target shooting and wanted to find out if anybody was having any issues with that and was just, you know, letting them know that, uh, they could reach out to him. So when all was said and done, it was the best of all outcomes from my perspective. And, uh, I haven't, uh, spoken to Trooper Davis about the other, uh, target shooting site, which is one house over, to see if he might do the same thing with that person. But it was all handled very nicely, uh, uh, you know, by the trooper. Uh, he's our guy for this stuff. And I thought it was great that we had people on our last meeting who, um, were very responsible gun owners and, you know, they, they, um, knew what the right kinds of backstops ought to be and sizing for doing the target shooting and how they worked with their neighbors. So when all is said and done, you know, to me, this was more, and this is me speaking personally, this was more of a safety and a neighbor issue than anything else. So, um, I don't know if any of the other selectmen would like to comment on it. Uh, have you gotten any more feedback from other people, uh, after our discussion two weeks?
I, I heard from one of the complainants yesterday, I don't know, around 2:00, a little after in the afternoon. I happened to be out of town at the time, but I got a, an email that there was shooting going on, um, from Mr. Costa's property. Um, and then I got one about, oh, six or seven minutes after the initial one saying that it stopped. That particular complainant is somebody that, um, continues to feel that it's illegal on what's going on. And, and I don't think as a board, um, in consultation with the state police, I know we've all had conversations, I don't know if Roger has, but I know you and I have, Catherine. State police, they do not feel it is a legal, uh, issue. So it, I could just, the only thing I personally can stress is I think we need, and I believe we're heading in that direction, more communication between neighbors and some thoughtfulness on another. I mean, one of the days that I got many complaints was the day that we were all preparing our, our properties because we had anticipated a hurricane hitting the state. We were out trying to get lawn chairs and pool chairs and stuff away and there was firing going on for two or three hours. Um, it's that sort of thing that I, I hope in bringing everybody together like we did last week, maybe the neighbors are going to realize and, and be a little more considerate of their neighbors. I'm not sure what else we can do at this time, Catherine.
Uh, I think that, you know, we'll, if there are more complaints, we'll monitor them and, and take them as they come. But for right now, uh, it seems like the, you know, state police are doing exactly what they should do and doing it in a good way. And if we find that there's more going on, then I'll be reaching out again to the state police to go, hey, you know, this isn't working the way we needed it to work.
Yep.
But they, I, I do think that they were helpful in, in making this happen.
I, I know that you felt that, and I never saw it, I guess there was some sort of a petition and it wasn't a, uh, what do they call it, a P1 application or whatever, uh, into form. But did you ever get any follow-up from that party that submitted them or any more feedback or anything?
Nope.
Okay.
And.
How many were on that petition?
I think, Chris, if, if you will call, I think there were like 20 people. It was, it was not a large number of people. It was just a lot of people in that same area.
Yeah.
There were some that, you know, were further out, but definitely in that same area.
Knowing that it's not a formal petition and didn't follow the town clerk's recommendation, would it be possible for Roger and I to get a copy of that, just so we know parties?
Yeah, you can get a copy of it, so, and that'll help in terms of knowing, you know, who the people are who are concerned.
Appreciate it.
Um, it's just I don't want it to go anywhere as a, looking like a formal petition because it's like not that.
Well, I, I think you and the town clerk have made it very clear that it doesn't follow any legal format. And I even think Carrie, the, who I believe submitted that.
Yeah.
Uh, indicated it wasn't a formal petition for, uh,
Right.
anything formally done.
Okay, yeah, I'll be, I'll make sure to email that out to you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, new business ratification of proclamation in support of National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Weekend and Bells Across America for Fallen Firefighters on Sunday, October 3rd, 2021.
I will make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we're delighted to do this, so. Very good. Thank you. Uh, discuss town imposed mandates and enforcement of same. We touched on this during our last meeting, that we really don't have enforcement capability for things like, you know, someone's not set up right for target shooting or, um, they're target shooting on an acre of land or, you know, or, or anything else like that. What we use for enforcement are when people have a complaint, they call the, the state police and they enforce whatever the true laws are. And when it comes to anything like a mask mandate, um, that's nothing that we have enforcement capability on. And I can't even imagine how we would do that. Even calling the, uh, police in the case of the, uh, Wooden Spoon, which we're all pretty horrified about. Had the police been called, uh, or we, no, if we had been called, what would we have done? You know, we would have called the police and the person would be gone by then. So I think that one of the things, you know, that certainly has happened, and, and by the way, I hadn't mentioned it during the meeting, but what I had done before that, when I first got the complaint, was I called around to the other restaurants and food service places to see if they were having any difficulty with mask enforcement in their, in their establishments. And, you know, they were, no, they weren't. How much enforcement they're actually doing was another story, okay? They probably weren't as, uh, that I know they weren't as restrictive as, um, if the Wooden Spoon, trying to get people to wear a mask for basically, I'd say 30 seconds to be, get to the, where they were going to sit socially distanced. You know, the other facilities aren't built like that. It's not close quarters, quite the close quarters. So, uh, I don't think they have much of issues. And they certainly didn't tell me that they did. One of the establishments said, I don't know who, someone has something on in the background, a TV or radio, somebody talking on a phone. Now it's stopped, okay? Um, they, uh, they really were saying that their people that were doing serving and cooking and everything, they were wearing masks, but they weren't really forcing it on other people. They were having those people make their own decision about whether they've been vaccinated or not or whatever. I went into Dunkin' Donuts myself and when I went in to order something, you know, the person who was serving me did not have a mask on. So I don't think that that's being enforced in there. For us, trying to do enforcement, I can't even imagine how we would do it. We don't have police at the ready for us.
Yeah. Catherine, I, I did sort of the same thing that you did. I, I went after our meeting the last time. Catherine, I I did sort of the same thing that you did. I I went after our meeting the last time I went to several local businesses and I I I also touched on Dunkin' Donut, but I talked to a couple of owners and a couple of proprietors. And one of the ones in a restaurant in town indicated that there's a general negative attitude of people right now coming in to his premises. His his particular people are all inoculated. He's inoculated. His people are wearing masks. They they let people know they would prefer if they come in with masks, but they don't enforce it.
Right. Because.
And he's had some issues with some disgruntled people for them even mentioning it. He felt that a mandate would even cause more problems. And I heard that not as strongly from the other proprietors that I talked to, but it was the the same general thing. They were there. They didn't want personal confrontations with people because people's attitudes right now are kind of rare pitch.
They're a little flashpoint. It's amazing.
I mean, you can see it driving on the roads. I'm hoping it goes away, but so anyway, I I couldn't agree more with what what your local survey did because I did the same thing and I heard the the same sort of feedback. While they appreciate the understanding concern, they all felt that if if they wanted to demand that people wear masks within their premises, it was their right to do it. But frankly, none of the four that I talked to wanted to even do that.
Right.
And they were and I flatly asked them, would you be opposed to a mandate imposed by the town? And they said at this time, yes. So.
Understood. Roger, do you have any comments on that?
No, I'm saying my feedback pretty much is followed in step with bills in terms of the individuals I've talked to as well.
Okay, thank you. All right. Chris, did you think there was anything more that we would need to discuss about this one enforcement or anything? Okay, good. American Rescue Plan potentials for project funding. We had appropriated $400 to support a vaccination clinic, an instance of one. I think we used $30 from it so far. And and what I'd like to do is I would like to continue to have that that appropriation just set aside just for vaccination clinics ongoing. Because we're going to be holding more of them and I don't want to come back and have to nickel and dime you every time when we're going to have a vaccination clinic to see if we can get a small appropriation for it.
Some will.
Thank you. Can we have a second for that?
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. ARPA reporting, I will be attending a meeting on Friday with NCOG. It's just and I'm sorry, it'll be on Thursday, a special meeting about how we're going to be doing our ARPA reporting. And that meeting got moved. It got moved to Thursday of this week. So I did find out that we had asked what it would be as an hourly rate for whatever we were doing is 55 bucks an hour. So I think for for us, what we've allocated for it, we'll cover that just fine. A request from Eastern Highlands Health District for an allocation of 1,590 as per Ashford's per capita share for replenishment of resources spent in pandemic response activities. This is a fairly small amount for us to take from the American Rescue Fund to help offset the costs that they've had that they didn't get monies for. And I will tell you that Mansfield put in quite a bit, you know, I think it was in the certainly the five-digit thing, whether 30,000 or 40,000. They're asking us for $1,590.
Yeah, I propose we.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Let's see, standalone contracts with CES for this the company that's doing our assess did our assessments on the buildings. This is kind of an after the fact thing. This is for existing condition survey of the fire department and the the charge for that is $3,800, which is within well within the realm of what the other charges were for other buildings. And this building happens to be a little more complex with some of the things it has.
And and we feel that's going to be covered by the.
It is, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, board commission committee appointments. Ellen Wilms and Watercourses, we don't have a name to fill the vacancy created by Ken Gary's resignation, my knowledge. Recreation Commission, fill one alternate member seat term to expire March 31st. I think I think, Bill, you said there might be a person that.
We'll work on that one.
Yeah. Commission on Aging, fill vacancy created by the resignation of Elaine Wilms Pandolfo. We don't have anybody on that as far as I know. Okay, tax refunds. What do we have? You said nothing? Good. Okay, and where's my second page here? I have this and oh, adjournment.
Hi, could I ask that we add one more thing for a brief discussion on?
Sure. What's the thing you'd like to add?
Regarding street lighting.
Okay.
This is kind of almost becoming an annual event for me, but I'd like the board to consider authorizing a street light on 74 and Upton Road.
Actually, one of the things we have been looking at is moving the street light that is currently, if I got it correct, Chris, moving the street light that's on across the road.
It's a sort of Gary's garage.
Well, we want to talk to Gary about it. So um, so yes, street lighting, I'm sorry, you were adding this to the agenda. I didn't do that right. So we have a second to add that to the agenda?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now street.
I would like to make a motion, whether it be a new one or a transfer for from a nearby one to the corner of Upton and 74.
Okay.
As the light starts to dwindle daybreak, it on a Wednesday night, I am very concerned. It is very dark there. You can't see that corner at all. That it's a accident about to happen. And another corner that I I've had a number of residents mention to me. And Chris, what's the name of the road where Potter's Store used to be at 89? Say it again.
Old Town Road.
Yes, Old Town. I guess for years there was a light there on that corner and I don't know how long it's been there, but apparently there's been a number of near miss accidents. I like consideration of looking into doing a light there too.
Okay.
It's a very populated area and I would highly recommend we support that.
So is this a motion for the first selectman to take action on having either moving or putting a new light at Upton and 74 and whatever.
Old Town and 89.
And 89. Okay.
Yes.
And then we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Excellent.
Okay, now the most important motion tonight. Who's going to go for it?
Motion adjourned?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Thanks, John.